If you're, if you're having trouble, I can open it while you're talking if you want.
Yeah, for some reason it's not going full screen. Can you see that?
Jeff, did you miss, Jeff, did you miss the consent agenda?
Uh oh.
Um, yes, I did.
You did.
Let's do that quickly.
Okay.
Want me to stop sharing?
No, that's fine.
No, no, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Another second?
So, I just had a problem with December 1. I have to do a special town meeting on that night. And if there's any chance to move that date or not have that date, that would be nice. I hate missing meetings.
Let's see, let's wait and see if your plans change and/or if what the agenda looks that night before we commit. Cause the problem with canceling is then you probably only have like a mid-December meeting and you'd only get one meeting in December. Cause you're probably not going to do it into December meeting. So let's just, let's see as we get closer, see what the calendar, if we need to adjust maybe more than one meeting perhaps. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for bringing it up. And George, thanks for keeping me on track with the consent agenda. Another one of my.
We got a vote on it.
Yeah. So Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Now we can go on to Sean and he's, you can, you've got your screen up now Sean.
Hey Sean, can you make the image larger on your screen?
How do I do that after I share it?
You can just, you're still in the document. You should be able to just go.
Locked onto that screen. Let me try it on the other screen.
Either that or unshare and reshare.
It's too small to read.
I can't, no.
By the way, Sagus is a town. I stand corrected. I just looked it up.
Huh?
Standby. Sorry.
I'm told by someone Paul that Natick is the largest town in the state, meaning it's not a city, but it's the largest town population wise.
What is the population of Natick?
I have no idea. If we had Jeremy here, he'll be here in a little while.
Jeremy is here.
Oh yeah, I don't know.
Jeremy's on here.
I don't know what the population is. He's down, he's on vacation this week though. He's.
No, he's here. He's on the meeting.
He's on the meeting.
I see him there. Yeah. But he's down in the cave. Did you hear us Jeremy? I think he's still muted.
Wendy, do you know you live in Natick?
I do know. It's thirty seven thousand.
Wow, okay. Sorry Jeremy.
Jeremy's thunder. He was there for a second.
Oh, was he there? Oh, sorry.
That's good. That's all good. So.
I can't get this thing to zoom more.
It's a word, it's a word document or PDF?
It's word, but my computer's not.
Freezing? Let me, you start talking and let me open, try to open it.
That's okay. It's in our packet, you know, we could just.
It is. Yeah.
Look on our own computers.
Yeah, but, oh, hold on. You see that now?
Yep.
Yeah.
Much better. Thank you.
Apologize for that.
No worries.
So real quick, we threw this together and I've already made some edits to it because stuff's happening pretty fast right now. But I wanted to get in front of you for a couple of reasons. So the quick update, for those of you who don't travel on it, which is probably half the town, Woodland and Goulding Street have both been a project we've been working on most of the summer. We rebuilt a stretch that makes the triangle of Lower Woodland Street and all the Goulding West. And then paved all the way to Apple Street, Milden paved. That's just about complete. We had to rebuild most of the driveway approaches. That's finished. We marked out the intersections, didn't get any line painting done yet, the long lines, but, but they're due to get done. So that's set up for probably next week. We'll go through line painting a little bit more later, but we're gonna, we're gonna paint both roads at ten foot lanes. It was historically, we used to just throw the fog on wherever it kind of meanders to, but it's best on the country roads to throw a yellow, a single yellow in a fog and hold it in a certain dimension. So it helps to slow the cars down a little bit through the curves. We did at the same time, if you didn't notice, at South Main Street, part of the complete streets project for years that we talked about was shrinking that intersection down. That was about a forty five degree approach or exit off of South Main on a, on a west Goulding, you could probably do it at about forty miles an hour in a car. You can't do that anymore. We shrunk the, the intent there is with shared streets and complete streets, the intent is to try to shrink the, the crosswalk. So we knocked about thirty feet out of the crosswalk there. So that's, most people are pretty happy with it. If you were used to driving that intersection and, and taking it, you know, throw your blinker on and taking it about forty on two wheels, you can't do that anymore. But we, you know, the week before we did it, we had an accident where someone almost destroyed a car on the, the first tree that you hit after you go through the intersection. So it's proving to be safer. North Main Street, for those that don't know, we, we prepped that for chip seal early in the year. Like we like to do, it's still waiting on that. There was some prep work that needed to get done. There's a section in North Main from Lake Street. Basically just about at Lake Street where the sidewalk has crumbled due to some grading issues and a massive, massive tree that basically heaved the sidewalk up about two feet above the road. We've been, we've been trying to put some granite curb in there to try, to try to be able to rebuild the sidewalk. We finally did that the past two days. This is not the year to try to buy, purchase granite curving. It's, it's nearly impossible. Luckily we were able to, our contractor Lynch, when they came in to do Sanger Street, brought some extra and I told them we'd buy it. And we were lucky enough to get that done. So that sidewalk will get rebuilt. And what that also allowed was you can see a picture. Just about every engineer that's looked at any part of North Main Street has always said, there should be a turning lane go on to Lake Street. There wasn't quite enough space for it, the way it was configured, but the cars have basically been creating that over the years. People that drive that, as you come off a Coolidge Street, you know, if there's a left turning vehicle on the lake, you could just drive around them on the side. And it was a constant repair on the edge of the road because everyone was driving off up onto the sidewalk. So the proposal right now, we have about two weeks before we chip seal the road. And we would never want to repaint the lines and move them after we chip seal. What I'm proposing is, is either tomorrow or Monday, we're gonna do a little lane shift with the, the lines and try putting that turning lane in. We measured it out, we marked it. It's pre-marked right now. It fits. The road is just about the same dimensions as the, as the lights downtown. Where you have two, two ten foot lanes for the turn lane and the, and the straight lane. And in this instance, we'll have eleven feet, about eleven foot six for the pavement on the northbound lane going through. But we're gonna mark, one other thing we're gonna do to mask what Natick is gonna do when they finish their project on what is their South Main Street. We're gonna go to ten foot six lanes from fog to double center. Ten foot six lanes are quite a bit smaller than what we've had on Route sixteen and twenty seven. It's been found and supported by Mass DOT that by shrinking those lanes, you make it safer for the other users of the road, the bikes. And you, and you tend to slow the traffic down a little bit through the, through the high speed corners. Because the impression of a ten foot six lane does not feel as comfortable at high speeds as a twelve or sometimes meandering thirteen foot lane, which we have on South Main Street and so places. So we're gonna go with the ten foot six lane. The proposal now is to try doing the turn lane at Lake Street. And then if it's successful, we can, that's what we'll permanently paint in a couple of weeks after it gets chip sealed. It's due to get chip sealed after Labor Day. The rain lately, albeit it doesn't seem like much. It's, it's been enough to disrupt the schedule. So we're, we may be the week of Labor Day, we may be the week after with the chip seal.
You got rain tomorrow afternoon, I think.
Yeah. Well, we can use that. That's not gonna slow us down, but it may disrupt the car. Here's another picture and he may did for us. Showing the depiction. It's not totally accurate because you don't see the, you know, the granite, that driveway just got rebuilt. So you know, the, the fog lines show you how much extra asphalt there is in here. And there's quite a bit here too that you don't see. Do you see my pointer?
Yes.
Okay. And this is an old Google image because this, this line doesn't go straight to a forty five. It hooks back a little bit. Anyone that not aware, we did a little bit different painting on Western Ave. We still haven't done the long lines. Western Ave has some repairs from the chip seal a couple of years ago. But we, what we did was we mimicked at the Western and Washington intersection. We somewhat mimic what used to be there. There used to be an island that was put in for a couple of years to try to slow down, if not discourage the tractor trailers turning on to Western. For those that remember that got pulled out because it was, it was somewhat of a hazard. But we're in the process of basically painting that out at least to line the cars upright. So you don't have trucks trying to turn through the passenger seat door of a car that pulled up wrong to the intersection. Sanger Sawon is just about done. That's the complete streets. Phase three project where we did the sidewalk down Sanger and we redid the crosswalks crossing from Sanger to Sawon onto South Main. That's nearly completed. Be done in the next several weeks. And then while I had you, I just wanted to mention, we just, we just today, late afternoon, we got a response from DEP on the Woodhaven Leland water. They sent back a letter. They called a letter a deficiency, but it's a letter basically asking to clarify some, some items from the engineers. So that's still in process with Mass DEP. Will respond. We have a hundred and eighty days to respond. We don't expect that it would take anywhere near that. And then that sets the clock for a response from them to get the approval to do the water, the combination and the, and the treatment. Any question? Comments?
No, just that it looks great and you've done a terrific job. I mean, it's hard to get contractors and vendors and it's really, that Sanger Street is exceptional. And I think the other, I haven't driven the Goulding yet, but it looks cool. Thank you Sean.
Thank you.
And, and your crew too. Okay. You can unshare and we'll go on to, we have a consideration of appointment for the personnel board. Is Vicki leading this Diane or who's?
He is here. I believe she's still here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great.
You want to describe the candidate and the, maybe we'll have them talk. Vicki, we got their bio in our package.
Yeah, she's not available. That's why I'm here. So.
Okay.
She's actually away helping her mom for the week. So you have her bio, just as an aside, Nick Anstopoulos resigned. So with Leanne's approval, there will be four of us. It will be Leanne, myself, Carol DeSousa and Nancy Hess. The personnel boards had significant lack of participation over the last year or so. And it's really only been myself and Nancy, and we haven't been able to do much because when we just talk to each other, it creates a quorum. So the good news is with Leanne's appointment, it will make a four person board and we will be able to, to get back to work and, and do some things that we need to get done.
And the, the open street on the board is still open, right? I think.
Correct.
Still advertised.
Yeah. There's one more. Correct. It's a five member board. So anybody wants to put their hand up?
Oh, you want to work on that?
I was gonna move approval of the appointment.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric, who just joined up. And I am I as well. Thank you Vicki.
Thank you very much. Look forward to meeting her. Thanks.
Yep.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I think I've, I've spoken to, and I spoke to you about this Jeff, but at some point I just want us to consider perhaps at the next town meeting to remove the prohibition where members of the planning personnel board cannot attend any other, cannot be on any other committee or board as well. I think that's one of the limiting factors when it comes into like, you know, filling a lot of these positions. I understand it's a conflict of interest and we actually replace it with language that actually states kind of the obvious conflict of interest. We have to recuse themselves. It has to do with whatever other committee that they're on. But I just, just something I think I want us to consider for the next town meeting.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful.
And anything else on this item? Okay, we'll move on. The art is here for Forest and Trails Association report. I saw you here somewhere Art.
He's here.
Where did he go? You need to unmute yourself. You're muted.
Here we go.
There you go.
Right. I'm gonna share my screen now. It's, it's okay with you?
Perfect.
All right. This is a little story about the Sherburne Forest Trail Association, about what we do. It's a brief presentation. And if you can guess what this, this, this public land in town is, you're doing pretty well because.
We, we don't see, I can't see a shared screen.
And your audio is a little funky Art. Can you make it come a little closer or something?
Turn it up here. Okay, so you're not seeing my screen. That's great. How about now?
No. Not yet. You have the document open and you click share a screen, the green button?
Yep.
And then you, within that, you click, I think, desktop. And then once you have desktop open, you can just minimize zoom and go to the document you want us to view.
Art, if you have trouble, I've got your document. I'll open it up. If yours doesn't work, I can share mine.
Okay. How'd you do that?
Okay.
Something obviously is wrong here.
Okay, now wait a second. Sorry, I've got to make mine a little smaller so I can share. Hold on. Back to Zoom. Okay, hang on people. It's coming.
There you go.
Yep. Okay. How's that?
There you go. Better.
Okay.
Move the heads over.
Thank you Marion. All right. Anybody out there know what this picture is of which public land in town? It's a hard one. It's, it's name sort of gives it away. This is Hidden Meadow here off of Western.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay, I've got to change the screen there, Marion.
Okay, hold on. Come on PowerPoint. Help me out. Here we go.
Okay. So the Forest Trail Association was founded in sixty seven. So it's been around for a long time. Nonprofit five oh, five oh one C three. And we're, we get money from contributions from members and some fundraising events, horse adventures at the hundred pace. We have it right now and then. Do the conservation connections in February every other year. But what we do is we promote the use of the, the public lands here. And it's really for the benefit of people in town, people out of town. And we found that with the coronavirus coming up, we had a lot more people walking in town. In fact, we had to reprint Sherburne walks because we were running out. So we've sold about a thousand of those Sherburne walks and I hope all of you in the select board have got a copy of that. If I was there in person, I'd try to sell you a copy, but here, here we are on Zoom. So any rate, that's what, that's our mission. Our objectives simply put is we want to promote access and use of public lands. Really the reason for that is we want to have people learn to love the public lands and really support their, the ongoing usage, you know, the upkeep of them that needs to be done. And also to expand things as, as time goes on. The second thing is connection. We're trying to connect up public lands to one another. So we have a lot of, you know, continuity. We take long hikes or in the case of the mountain bikes, bike rides on, on the trails. Now you can see there on the, on the slide, who's on this is Laura Van Barken. Barkum is our president. Ray Lehman is our VP, Rob Wolf Treasurer, Sam Nelson, myself and a number of other people who are on the, including Marion. Thank goodness is on that Forest Trail Association board. And.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Anyway, on the access and use is probably the main thing we do is first we have trail clearing days and bridge building days. And I'll show you a couple of pictures because the one thing I like to do in presentations is always have more pictures than words. So we'll get to the pictures shortly. So we've been, we've actually built two bridges last year on one in town forest, one in conservation land. We're looking to do more as well. And we also sponsor Eagle Scouts who build bog bridges as well. And we also have gotten, bought this snow dog, which is something that helps groom the trails for cross-country skiing and for walking in the winter time. You know, you don't get as much snow as you used to, but nonetheless, when there's snow, people go out there and use it. Of course, we have the Sherburne walks book, twenty bucks. And it's, it first did this walk, first did the book back in nineteen ninety-two. It's been thirty years now since. And we finally redid it a couple of years ago. And with my co-authors, Rick Antel and Seth Malloy. I'm sure you guys know Seth certainly. He's on a number of boards. And so that has really helped, I think, to, to get people out on, on the trails and, you know, twenty bucks. It's easy to make change to it. Meetings, you know, memorica, beers, et cetera. We also offer guided walks throughout the year. We're having five this year. I've done two. Marion's about gonna be doing one this month, in September, excuse me. And that's a good thing because a lot of people, the last walk I did, had somebody from that new development on, on West Main Street. On, on Washington Street, close to Houston line. And they really were enthusiastic about the trails. But they really spread the word. We also have been having ongoing mountain bike discussions. That may have reached the level of the Board of Selectment because there's been, you know, our, our open spaces is somewhat limited. We have more, many, much more open space than a lot of other towns. But nonetheless, the, the space has been shared by a number of different uses. Mountain bikes are sort of new equestrians, a lot more of them. There are horses now. And they do actually do a great job of maintaining the trails. We also are working to get trailhead signage, signage up there and road crossing as well. We're gonna work with Dave Cummings, Sean Cummings to get that up on, on North Main Street, right there where they got the new park. Down Forest. Now, here's a, here's a classic walk in town. King Phillips Overlook Rocky Narrows. And you can see the left-hand slide there. You can see the, they approached it. If you've never been in town before, like when I moved here back, way back when, this is how I came down. And I had no idea what I was gonna see when I got there. So on the right side of your screen, you see that great view from King Phillips Overlook. So that's, that's one of the things we were trying to, to get people to go out there to see these great things. Okay, we get this slide. Now here on the left, here's the two bridges we built nineteen, twenty twenty-one. On the left side is one town forest there. On the right side, one over Course Brook is conservation land. So you can see this is all volunteer work. We actually got the Appalachian Mountain Club to pay for both of these. Pay for a good part of both of these because this is on the Bay Circuit Trail, which I, I hope you all have heard about. So. Next slide here, we have Sherburne Walks shown on the left-hand side. Like I said, if there's any of these people out here that want a, a book, let me know and I'll make sure we get something to you. And we've sold a thousand of these so far over the course of three years, which is pretty good, I think. And then the three authors right there, like I mentioned before, Rick Antel, myself, and Seth Malloy, right there. Okay. Okay. The connections that are, is our second objective for the Forest and Trail Association. We're trying to really connect up Sherburne's open spaces as well as neighborhoods and also the town center. And that being, able to do that with the Rockwell Woods over there by Unity Farm, where you can actually get from Green Lane down in the town center by just walking through a trail. It's pretty nice. But there's a lot more to it there. And we also have connections such as the Bay Circuit Trail that I mentioned before. And also the Upper Charles Rail Trail. That's a new one that just went in Sherburne. If you haven't walked it yet, you can get at it from Whitney Street over there. That connects all the way over roughly, you know, these eight or nine miles through Houston. We have about half mile in Sherburne, but it goes all the way into Milford and beyond, actually. And last is on the connections is, are the social connections we've heard we have to do every February, every other year. Though we haven't been able to do it for quite a while since, because of COVID, but we'll be doing it again in twenty twenty-three in early February. And see, that's nice about that is people, you know, a chance to get together at the community center and also the thing really it draws people, I think, are the drinks. And the fellowship of all the people that come because it's a, you know, a non-political setting and we have a speaker come in and talk. So that, that's the other part of connections. So those two things, access and use of the public lands, encourage that. We also are encouraging connections. And like I said, the mountain bikers have been really good at doing that. They need to, they can go for.
Art, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
I'm being a little bit, taking credit because I'm chair of the Boy Scout troop. But I also want to really recognize Alex Capillion's work opening up trail around Ward Pond there by the playground. That really is, I like the town center part because it really, a lot of people weren't aware that that was a trail. It was so overgrown.
Right.
It was pretty cool. So I know you worked with Alex as did Conservation Commission, but it's really, I've had a lot of people comment to me about that, that being opened and really realizing what was there.
Alex did a great job down there. We gotta hand it to him. I'm glad you're involved in this though Jeff. With scouts. The scouts over the years have done a lot of work for the town, a lot of places. Okay, now this next, next slide here is the Upper Charles Rail Trail. We just happen to have in Sherburne, the only place where there's any real turns in it. We happened to get there. My dog, our dog is checking it out. But this is not, if you look in the distance there, that's Whitney Street. You can't even see it. But that's, that's it. That's it up there. And you ought to take a walk over there if you get a chance, although Parkin's kind of tight. Whitney Street, going down there. Okay, next slide please. That's, okay, that's the end. Now, here's another one. I'm not gonna have, this, this was not a mystery. This is McGregor Quarry out there off of McGregor Road, of course, the conservation land area. So this is questions time. So I'm ready for questions if anybody has it.
I don't see any hands raised.
Probably questions. I just want to thank you guys for the work you do. I mean, I take my dog out in the trail behind my house every day. I'm, I live on Whitney Drive and it connects over. There's a, there's a forest and trail that's right, right behind my house. And that's just a great way to get out and enjoy it every day. And the fort, and the trails are really great back there connecting over, under the power lines, over to the schoolhouse lot, all that. So.
You can get over to the, the trail, Upper Charles Rail Trail from there too.
Yeah, you can. If you go down behind the horse farm, you can, you can connect through the woods.
It's good. Might get your feet wet, but you know.
Yeah, a little bit. Not, not this time of year. Not this year. You're not gonna get wet anywhere.
Yeah. Well, anyway, when I first moved to town, I was really blown away by the trails here. And that's why I wrote that book way back when. Thanks to Marion actually, who's, who's caused myself and two other people really to do Sherburne Walks book, the latest one. Which is a lot of fun to do. But we got, we got a lot of lands here. It's just wonderful to walk and a real pleasure.
Yeah, I can't take any credit at all Art, but I, I will say that when the short Forest and Trail group wanted to get this book redone, we asked Art and he was just way too busy with his consulting work, et cetera. And basically my only role was to twist Art's arm until he couldn't say no anymore. And then he really took it and now he's. until he couldn't say no anymore. And then he really took it in hand. And now he's totally involved. So that's great for all of us.
And I'm sure all of you in the Select Board can sympathize. Once Marion puts that meat on you, you know, you're, you're toast.
We got a few people to turn her loose on. Again, you're right. Thank you though. Kaden Azai, thank you very much for the update, but also for all the work that, that gets coordinated and done by so many volunteers.
Thanks, thanks, and you're welcome.
And I think Diane, we think we still have the books in Town Hall. If anyone's on, it doesn't
Yes, we do. We have them for sale at the Town Hall.
They're still available at the Select Board office if anyone needs the book or, or anyone you know that. It's a terrific book. So.
Thank you to everybody at Forest Trails.
And by the way, the proceeds go to the Forest Trail Association, not to my, not to me.
We're going to have to work out the contract details next year.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Art. All right. The next agenda item is Town Forest Management. And I think Dave Colleen's here. I saw him somewhere. If you want to talk, Dave, I asked to put this on the agenda because I just want to bring some things to the Select Board's attention. We've had, in the past year or two, there have been very few public meetings of the Town Forest Committee and no minutes have been published of the meeting. So one thing, I think they've turned that around now and they're they had an open meeting that I attended, I think it was about a week ago. So they're, we're trying to get it to be, at least people be more aware of what the Town Forest Committee is doing. Because there's, they do a lot of work and maintenance and you know, anytime they're down trees or all kinds of things that we heard Art talk about this, but it doesn't do you any good if there's down trees blocking the trail or unsafe conditions of some kind. So the Town Forest really is responsible for really main caretaking, I guess I would say, of all the trails that Art has published in his book. So we're very, very lucky to have their work. One thing I want to point out though, there, he mentioned the bike trails a little bit. I've asked them to come in, I think, two weeks. They're, they're considering a pretty significant bike park, a mountain bike park, which would be different from a trail that's used by all comers. You know, we have a lot of mountain bikers that use all the regular trails in town, but this would be a dedicated park with features and some, you know, work required to create those features. So, and it draws people from within town and from outside of town. So I felt strongly that we should, the Select Board really needs to decide to make this long-term decisions about Town Forest. So I, I feel that while we have the Town Forest Committee sort of the caretaker and management of the Town Forest, any strategic decisions that alter Town Forest, I, I would like to see coming to the Select Board to be reviewed and considered and solicited input from the citizens. So that's really why I asked it to come here, wanted to make you aware of that. And Marion, did you want to add anything on that?
Well, just to add that part of the issue is that in the Massachusetts State Law that describes Town Forest Management, Town Forest Committees and in, in our own publications in town, the, the this sort of degree of management and maintenance that the Town Forest Committee can do by, on their own, just as part of management. And what is considered a significant change in Town Forest that they would have to bring to the Select Board is not very well defined. So, you know, on, on both sides, it's, it's very vague. And the Town Forest Committee up till now has, has managed that by, you know, when they cleared a stand of trees down near North Main Street, they had public meetings and it was discussed. And I thought that was done the right way because everyone weighed in and it also, I believe, went to Select Board. In this case, yeah, it's a matter of how much change is too much. There's no clear line. So I think when, whenever there's uncertainty, like with this proposed mountain bike park, it should come to the Select Board. Just to err on the side of caution.
Dave, did you want to add, add your thoughts on this?
No, I can understand what you're saying. It's a big project. We don't have any plans yet. There was a proposal, which is like a, maybe like say it's a wish list. The guys that were looking at it, they've been on a couple of these and they want to try to propose it. And, you know, with the publicity going on right, excuse me, right now, we're holding off for a few months till the first of the year or so, I would imagine. And then, you know, something will come along, we'll get a set of plans. And, you know, we'll be knocking, knocking at your door with, with a request.
Okay. So we, we appreciate that. And so you, we'll just wait to hear when you have something that you'd like to share.
Yeah, when, you know, as soon as, as soon as we have something on paper.
Yeah.
I mean, what, what he showed you with the other night was, you know, off the internet from multiple places. And, you know, we're going to, they, they want to try to pick certain things because it's multi-generational.
Yep.
You know, you, you change things. You don't do the heavy duty stuff. You do you know, it's like a skate park downtown or swing sets or things like that. It's got to be, you know, children-friendly, basically.
Yeah, no, I think the, the presentation, while it was preliminary, was quite good. And I think it was a good team of people you had there. And we talked about other things like signage because the difference here is it might be primarily for bike riders. So we want to make sure that people don't want to be on a trail where, you know, it's, it's a different purpose. So that there's
Yeah, the, the whole thing with, you know, we've had bike trails oh, thirty to forty years in Sherman.
Yep.
And, you know, a couple of the, the ones that have been moved a little bit. You know, I told the guys, I said, they have to be safe. The bike trails have to be by themselves with signage. Anybody can use them, but people have to know that these, you know, kind of used more for bikes than pedestrians. So.
Yep. All right. Well, we'll, we'll look forward to hearing it. And thanks for coming tonight. I appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone on the Select Board have any additional comments?
Just in general, in general, I support actually mountain bike usage on actually trails as long as it's done reasonably. Like mountain bike groups have actually been some of the best on maintaining and land conservation for the last at least three decades.
Yeah. I think, I think, I know you, if you go to, not share your video, we'll see you on your bike, but the, the thing is that this will have features and probably be pretty unique. You wouldn't want hikers using the same trail, I think.
We do, we do make it.
Yeah.
Even the rocks that we have, that the, the bikes go over, there is an extra lane for walkers or people that are, you know, they don't want to go over the rock. They'll go around it. You know, so.
Just to clarify, I think the trail, the mountain bike trails that have been built recently for mountain bikes are, are signed and Dave and the mountain bikers have done a good job of trying to make them safe with bypasses for everyone. What brought this to the fore was the proposal for a mountain bike park. That's different. It's not a trail. It's a cleared area behind Pine Hill School. That's like a it's like this
Excuse me. It's, it's not going to be cleared. There will be no clearing. You know, we're not cutting trees down to build this. We're building around trees.
Okay, well, anyway. I take that, Dave, that's fine. But anyway, we'll wait till we see the plan and then we can decide. I think it is appropriate that we take a look at it though.
Absolutely.
So, if I could.
Go ahead, Paul.
Just speaking as a lawyer. Recreation use is a traditional allowed use in town forests. So it's not considered a change of use as like putting a house in there or affordable housing, things like that. That would be change of use. You have to go to the legislature to make that kind of change. But recreation is a permitted use. And there's a statute called the recreational immunity statute that says as long as the municipality does not charge for the use of public lands, there is no liability on the part of the municipality.
Wonderful.
And I guess the last thing I would say is how beautiful our town forest is. We are blessed. It's one of the great assets of the town. Many communities don't have a town forest, or at least they don't have one of the, the size and scope. And so I thank the, the Town Forest Committee, the present one, and the predecessor committees, all the way back to that that Channing guy who created the town forest back in nineteen thirty-eight and used the, negotiated with Shell Pipeline
Yeah.
to get all that land. So it's a wonderful asset of the town. We need to preserve it for future generations. But recreation is part of the purpose of Town Forest.
Absolutely it is. Okay. Next item is Deb talking about acceptance of the ARPA funding grant.
Uh, yes, good evening. This is really very simple. It's in accordance with Massachusetts Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. Moved to have the Select Board accept the municipal allocation of the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA in the amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and nine cents.
So moved.
Paul, Paul's the one that accepts all our money. That's his job.
And, and thank you, Paul. I second.
Never say no to
All in favor, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I might as well. Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Yep. And our next item, Diane, I'm not sure who else is speaking. It's got Jen and Deb and Dan Sickel, I think, on the ARPA update. And I'm not sure if someone wants to share their screen or
Jen, do you want to share your screen?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Do you want me to jump right in, Diane?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, thanks. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. Just a quick recap. I, I think at, you know, on one of your meetings. We had, well, over the last several months, we talked a lot about the different ARPA projects. And at the last meeting that you had where we spoke about ARPA, there were six projects that I think the board had decided you really wanted us to hone in on and get some more information for you so that you could make some decisions. So we've done that. I would say there are two that we think could use a little bit more flushing out. But thought that there were some that we wanted to bring forward to you tonight in the interest of time. Given the time of year, I would say especially the tree project and the downtown campus project, we kind of want to take advantage of the fall in terms of those projects. And in particular, the trees, I think, if that's something Sean could move on, you'd want to get some of that done before the winter. So.
Yeah, I was going to interrupt you quickly, Jen. I think the town center, they made, Sam Nelson is on here, but because of the drought, I think they're changing the timing on plantings and that kind of thing in the town.
Okay. So if you want, I'll just do a quick recap. I don't know how much detail you want me to go in. You know, we did discuss the projects in, in quite a bit of detail at your last meeting when we discussed ARPA, but I'm happy to go through them again. We did give you some, you know, background in your packets. But if anyone's new on the call, I'll just kind of run through this. These are the ARPA projects that the board had previously approved. So your allocation was just under one point three million in ARPA funds that you received directly. And these are the projects you approved, projects you approved to date, about two hundred and eighty-five thousand, which leaves you just over a million. And again, over the course of the last several months, department heads and committees had submitted projects for you to consider. Advisory met and discussed a number of the projects that, all of the projects that were submitted. And then made some recommendations. And then the board really wanted to hone in, like I said, on these particular projects that are under consideration. So there are the town solar projects, the removal of the hazardous trees, the digitizing of the town land use records. And since we met that price, we've, we've honed it into the land use. And Addie May has done a tremendous amount of work. She's had a consultant come in and kind of do some analysis on the records. So that's come down. I think the original number was three fifty, but the thought is we'll focus on land use first. And that was to about around two forty-one. But in the meantime, you also received word that Sherburne would receive a hundred thousand dollar earmark through the state, which is great because that brings down what you have remaining to one forty-one, two twenty-five. Then you have that transformation of the town campus that you mentioned. And then the two that we feel could use a little more flushing out are the main stairs, the Pom-Pom Stormwater Project, and then the irrigation of Laurel Fields. I know the folks that are working on those are still working on them and could use just a little bit more time. So our thought was you could consider those maybe at one of your meetings in September. But we didn't want to hold up the first four, like I said, due to timing. The other thing we talked about is in terms of Pom-Pom and the irrigation of Laurel Fields, with Jeremy coming on board. You know, he has a particular skill set that might help kind of bring those two, flush those two projects out a little bit better. You know, being a DPW director next door, I certainly, he certainly has experience, I'm sure, on irrigation of fields. And then, you know, being a professional engineer, I think he could provide some assistance in terms of the Pom-Pom project.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to add one thing to that too, Jen, which is I was a big supporter of irrigation of Laurel Fields, but now I'm a little concerned with the drought. And if we really are considering, you know, irrigation projects, we might have to sort of rethink that a little bit and decide if the drought is a one-time occurrence or, you know, once in a fifty-year drought or sort of concerned about irrigation project right now.
And, you know, David Goldberg has been working on this, but, you know, he's a volunteer. He, he's, you know, getting as much information as he can. But I think, like I said, he needs a little, a little bit more time. He did touch base with us and let us know things were moving. And again, I think, you know, maybe having Jeremy might provide some assistance as well. So, you know, we originally, you know, you know, Diane, Dan, and Deb and I all, you know, were originally thinking we would just wait and give you all of them at once in September. But then when we really started talking particularly about the trees and the town campus project, as well as the digitizing, because, you know, they're, they're in there now. There's been a lot of work already done on that. And then the solar projects, I mean, the longer you wait, it's, it's, it's a savings for the town. So we felt like we should bring those four forward for you tonight. And let you discuss it. And then our recommendation is if, if, you know, those are favorable projects, you might want to move on those and then consider the other two in September.
Which one? Say that again. I, we may, we may end up rethinking the solar project due to something that came up this week.
So the four that we felt were, you know, flushed out well enough that you could make a decision on would be the town solar projects, the, the removal of the hazardous trees, the digitizing of the town land use records.
Yep.
And then the transformation on the town campus.
Okay, that's fine. And I have, we'll, we'll be discussing this in Select Board reports, but there may be some things that might cause some change. So we'll see. But that sounds good. Does anyone on the Select Board have any comments on the ARPA projects, please?
Just a question. The, the report in, in the packet indicates that we would be over our allocation by like ninety thousand if we approve all the projects.
Yes.
And we didn't touch upon that, but if we approve these four, that leaves only two projects with this ninety thousand shortfall. And I'm wondering, if you have six projects, then you can spread, you can spread the ninety thousand over six, you can divide it by six, rather than have to divide it by two with only two projects open. So I'm wondering whether, if we could take ten thousand off of one, ten thousand off another. I mean, like the hundred and fifty thousand for the tree. So does it make? Is it make or break that it'd be hundred and fifty as opposed to hundred and forty?
Well, well, the only thing I'll say on that one, remember, that one's kind of special because we had already had that on the warrant to be a Uh, expenditure authorized in town meeting and we took it off the warrant and. To ARPA, so I.
Yeah, we made a commitment.
I think we made a commitment to that. I think the thing here, though, these are sort of all preliminary estimates. I don't think that. The only concern I have is if you take ten thousand from each of them and then they all of a sudden either have to skinny the project back. And maybe not do everything they hoped or find some other funding themselves, so. We don't want to make them sub-economic, each one of them, you know what I'm saying? We want to make sure that we don't do things in a half-ass way because we took ten thousand from five projects or whatever. But I, but I think it, it, the, the projects are really scoping estimates right now, so. I, I don't think we're that level of sort of detail that we know.
I would just add to, you know, that, that summary that you're looking at includes a reserve kind of contingency of a hundred thousand, so.
Right.
You know, you can make a decision whether or not you feel you need to do that as well.
Uh, Jen, uh, if I can jump in here, I am not clear from what you've uh, written and what the, the summary says. Uh, what exactly is the hundred and fifteen thousand for solar projects aimed to do? Uh, you know, which projects where it sounds like sort of a, a carte blanche. You know, just find a couple of places to put solar, but uh, I know the Pine Hill School roof project is. Connected to a solar project, but have we seen more detail on those? I don't recall that I've seen much detail.
Sure, Sean's got his hand up, Marion.
Oh, good. I'd like to.
Yeah, you have another question or you're gonna answer a question, Sean?
No, I'm gonna answer that. That's not carte blanche at all. That's for the transfer station.
Yeah.
The swap shop roof, which was very well defined by um. Solect when they took a look, they, they, they were not interested in doing the cap. Um, the cap landfill at the time. They did the numbers for us on the, on the, on the roof of the swap shop. They're not interested in doing it, but they basically helped us put the numbers together. I wish Michael um, Lesser was here, but. Um, he would dazzle you with facts. It, it's very well defined exactly what needs to be done there as far as that. And then the fire station, we've been, we've been holding off for quite a while. We did the roof on the fire station a couple of years ago. It's a, it's a prime candidate for solar. It's too small for some of the big companies, um, but we can self-fund it. And you're talking about using ARPA money for something that's gonna pay itself back. I wouldn't venture to put a number on it because electric rates are, you know, all over the place, but. Um, it had a very, very good payback. And in fact, um, town meeting. Would absolutely approve it, but it, it, it even made more sense to use ARPA funding um, for something that had that could have a payback.
Oh, I agree. That does make a lot of sense and those, those locations you mentioned make a lot of sense too, so.
I'm not sure why any conversations in the past week has, has negated. Um. The use for doing those. I, I don't know anything about anything that's, that's, that's countered that argument.
That's, that'll come up in a couple minutes. They may not negate it, but I'll bring something up in the select board report.
Right, that, but I think uh, in any case, those locations make a lot of sense. And I think this is uh, a good thing to do, no matter what else happens elsewhere in town. Just uh. Yeah, I just wasn't sure exactly which sites you were referring to in this little description.
So I would say I'm a hundred percent in favor of solar projects. Not only because they bring back money, but because they help save the planet and provide for. The future of our, our world.
Absolutely.
And the, the reference that Jeff made to the hundred and fifty thousand, the commitment we made, yes, I. Thank you for recalling that for me, Jeff. I did make that commitment. Uh, we made that commitment both as a board and I felt I made it personally. So yes, I will stand by. That commitment and, and support the hundred and fifty. So I'm, I'm in favor of these four projects if you needed a vote.
Well, I guess you can correct me, Jen, or, or anyone. I, I sort of feel like um. We probably need to have sort of final numbers other than the three hazardous trees. Do we wanna, do we know enough that we want to approve these or do, I think the town center campus transformation probably is still a. Maybe ballpark estimate is not that accurate, but. I'm not sure we're ready to vote yet. Are we? Do you feel?
So, oh, oh, sorry. As part of the discussion, uh, it was acknowledged that the, the costs would not be exactly accurate and. Unused funds would be returned to the ARPA fund, as I recall.
That's right. So you, you certainly can reallocate them. Um, we did talk and felt that these four were flushed out enough. Um, and Dan, Dan and Zama call, I think he can talk about the town campus project, but he felt very comfortable that that number. Having flushed out enough that that was a number you could move forward with.
So can I make a motion then to approve those four projects?
Well, I, I guess I'm not opposed to it, but I don't think the costs are truly nailed down yet. So are we, you know. We have one forty-one, two twenty-five for digitization and another hundred thousand for the earmark. I, I sort of feel like, do we want to. Propose an exact number right now? I'm not sure we know enough on any of these to propose an exact number.
Well, I thought they had a good answer, Jeff, when they just said that an- anything that's over will go back to the fund. And that Jen said that there was enough uh, comfort with these numbers. And I know when we go to town meeting, many times we do appropriations for projects with our best estimate. And.
No, no, that's true, but um, it's really. It's not a cost estimate that varies, it's the scope of the project that, that varies, I think, so.
Uh, let me just, want me to just answer the digitizing thing for a second, Jeff?
Yeah, sure.
So, so that was, um, you know, Addie May went through and I think counted every single file and every single cabinet and. And when they got the um, cost and, and that may change because I think there's duplication there. So you certainly could round that, you know, if you wanted to make it a hundred forty thousand or. You know, I don't think that's has to be exact, um, because that, that will change a little bit. Um, because I think you have some duplications among departments in terms of, you know, there's some records that may not have to be digitized in three different places.
No, I know that. I've got.
Yeah.
I know what they're working on next week and they've got things coming on Monday, new, new file, rolling files coming in on Monday. No, I'm a little bit aware.
So you could, you could certainly, you could certainly round that. I don't think that needs to be quite, quite exact like that.
Anyone else on the select board have come? You're finished, Sean. Are you, you have more comment? Your hands.
I was just gonna comment that regardless of what the number is, zero is the number right now. So you, I, I urge you to vote on something.
Zero for which project? All, all of them or which project in particular?
No, I, I'm just saying, I think you need to vote on it regardless of what the number, like one forty-one, one forty, one thirty-eight.
Yeah, but are you, you're only talking about a digitization right now or you're talking about all, all four?
I, I think we should, you should vote on the four. I, I mean, if you want to fight about what the number is, it's fine, but. I don't, I'm, I'm urging you to not just punt it and wait until we more define things.
Okay.
Uh, otherwise, we're gonna have tree on, on top of cars and. And we're not gonna get anywhere with the digitization. I mean, we've, we're, we're beating certain things to death without just actually working on them. It could be three hundred thousand dollars on digitization, but we're not doing every department yet.
Yep. All right.
I'll second Paul's motion.
Okay, so the motion, if I understand it, is to approve the numbers shown here. Uh, for four projects, town solar one fifteen, remove hazardous trees one fifty. Uh, digital records one forty-one, two twenty-five and transformation of town campus one thirty-five-five.
If it's okay, I'd like to hear from Diane who had her hand up.
Yeah.
Oh, hi. So I just wanted to say that I spoke to each of the four proponents. To, to zero in on that number and that, those are strong numbers, so I don't think the board should hesitate on voting on them. I think we've pretty much zeroed in on the, on the numbers.
Okay. Well, we have a, a motion, I think, uh, I forget who seconded it. Have you seconded, Marion? So let's vote then. Marion.
Aye.
George.
All right.
Paul.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you, Jen and everyone involved.
Thanks so much. Have a good night.
Okay, select board reports. I have three to report, but this uh. Someone else want to go first? Does anyone else have select board reports that they want to bring forward?
I, I, I have a brief one.
Okay.
Okay, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Right, this week, uh, we had a presentation of, as just a small uh. Presentation requested by uh, the owner of ninety Maple Street. Uh, regarding a possible project that uh. A, a potential buyer of his land is contemplating. And this is very early days and there's nothing official about it, which is why it was not a posted meeting. Uh, they just called together a few people, representatives of select board. And a couple of other representatives in town, the town planner. Um, to say that a company, a ground-mounted solar company. Is interested in purchasing ninety Maple Street. Uh, and I'm sharing my screen. I think you can see this map.
We can see it.
Okay, uh, down at the lower right is Maple Street, sort of going on an arc through the corner. And up at the upper left, you see the trails around the quarry pond. So between McGregor Drive, which is up in the upper left, the very corner and Maple Street. And then Hunting Lane over on the right is a large private property that my cursor is on right now. Uh, ninety Maple Street. And uh, the same owner owns a twenty-acre property that abuts town land here. And his land abuts town land here as well.
They own the land to the right of the wetlands there too, right, Marion, in the northeast corner? Now, over to the, to the other side of, of the wet, there, I believe also.
No, that's um, Baharley Kaplan.
Is it? Okay.
Uh, the, 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 the property in question is just this.
Yeah, that's the, that's you, you're right. That's the part I was thinking of. Yep.
Plus this part.
Because you've got the wetlands down the middle there.
That's right. There, there are several wetlands that go through this. Uh, I won't go into detail. I'm just kind of reporting to the select board that the. Uh, th- this is a, a forested property. It's kind of uh, this, this area here is the headwaters of Course Brook, which runs into the Sudbury River. It's all forested. It's the whole east side of Bear Hill. Um, and as you see, there, there are some town land and trail connections. Uh, the proposal is to install ground-mounted, so, a ground-mounted solar array that would cover. Uh, if this is ninety acres, it would cover about sixty of these acres, about.
I think, I think they said fifty, Marion.
Fifty?
Fifty acres and it's twenty megawatt, up to twenty megawatts of generating capacity.
I think, I think he said they'd like to do sixty, but they could scale it back to fifty.
Yep.
Something like that. Anyway, it, it's a lot of ground-mounted solar, so I'm just reporting that. That's a proposal that's going to be aired over time, uh, over the next months, I guess. In town and there's, there's not much to discuss here, but kind of keep your antennae up. When it's prevent, presented at planning board, for example, we do have a ground-mounted solar bylaw. Uh, that uh, does not allow ground-mounted solar arrays except for the property owner's own use. And this would be a large solar array that would be for uh, public use. And part of the discussion the other day was, could it be? Uh, confined to use by Sherburne residents and the business of all that I won't get into because uh, it's complicated. Uh, but anyway, it's something that's gonna be coming up, so uh, just uh, watch. The town website and watch for its appearance in meetings because it would be interesting to get the input of everybody in town.
So Marion?
Yes.
Again, just speaking as a lawyer, there's a state law. That says that no community can. Prohibit ground-mounted solar arrays, but they can do reasonable regulation thereof. And there's a lot of cases that define what is reasonable. Regulation and what's unreasonable regulation. I've happened to have spent some time litigating these issues. Uh, so regardless of what our bylaw says, there's a state law. That is going to be in play here. And the solar, my, ground-mounted solar arrays, the companies that provide that. Us are well-lawyered and are well familiar with. Um, the ways and means of. Challenge and local regulation.
Yes, I got that sense exactly, Paul.
Yeah, the, the, the person we met with, the, the landowner, uh, property owner had brought a developer. Who was very collaborative and approachable, but he, he explained that all to us and. You know, there are very few things that are, have guaranteed rights, including churches and other things like that, but, but solar was one. He gave an example of a. Case, a famous case, I guess, in Waltham where someone lived in Waltham, but they wanted to, they were putting, I think, a solar array in Lexington or some. Adjacent to his property and he just wanted the road to go through Waltham to this solar field and. Waltham opposed it, but it was overruled.
Yeah, I can.
I may have some of the details wrong, but so there is a developer that this landowner has um. I don't know whether brought on board is true, but they had come present to us and they're gonna be further defining what their proposals are.
So we'll, yeah, so we'll see what comes out of it, but.
Yeah.
Uh, up against that is uh, also, you know, other state guidelines that I think are non-binding, but. According to the state, uh, energy and environmental, whatever that group is, the, the department is. They uh, recommend that ground-bound solar uh, be installed only on previously disturbed lands. Or open areas uh, or pavement and not uh, not on um, undisturbed natural forested landscapes. So we'll see how it plays out.
But this would be a major, one of their constraints right now is what can Con Edison transport from that site? Is that, is that large of a, a. Generation capacity? Not Con Edison, you, you know what I'm saying, Eversource. Uh, what can they? Uh, their transmission capabilities of that volume of uh, of a generation capacity. So it's a big project.
There are technical issues like that and there are also the environmental issues. You can see, there's a lot of wetlands here. The wetlands here are actually much bigger than they're shown. Um. Uh, in fact, uh, when this was proposed for development years ago, uh, when the Pulte want, Pulte Company wanted to do. A, a for, an elderly housing development here. There was a, a problem with access because this is actually all wet here. The, the house that exists right now is right down by Maple Street. And the rest is undisturbed land with a lot of wet. But anyway, yeah, that's gonna play out in the next. In the next few months.
Yeah, we'll discuss it more going forward, but I'm also uh, thinking pretty soon we probably gonna want to consider if this project is. Moving forward to hire some consultants. So we, you know, Michael Lesser is very knowledgeable about this. We had most of the major planning, uh, conservation. Most of the major boards attended the session, as did Mary and I, but um. We're probably gonna need, this is a major, major deal and this developer has done these kinds of projects in Chelmsford and. Um, I can't remember all the, Charlton, I can't remember all the other towns, but. Um, they're pretty knowledgeable and pretty savvy, so if we're gonna be negotiating with them, we're probably gonna need some legal and technical expertise. To understand and not just react to their proposal, but maybe know things that we can push for. So it's kind of a big, we may end up uh, sharing um. In different ways with the Community Choice Aggregation Plan, sharing their production capacity. And other things like that. It turns out after the useful life of the field, the land would revert to the town of Sherburne. So there's pros and cons. It's just gonna be very, very complicated to evaluate and negotiate. But, but a kind of a cool opportunity also.
Yeah, it is. On the other hand, this is uh, ninety acres of mostly undisturbed forest. And wetlands. That's one of the largest forested tracts in town that has a lot to do with, you know. The environment of the whole town, so it's.
And Frank Jenkins from Land Acquisition was also present for the meeting.
That's right.
Anyone have any other questions on that? All right. Uh, that was one of my three, actually, Marion. The next one I just want to mention in passing, about an hour ago. I received an open meeting law complaint about the town administrator search. So I just wanted to notify people of that. And Paul, I believe you had a recommendation on how to approach this.
Yes, I want to move to refer to town council to. Yes, I want to move to refer to town council to handle and respond to.
Okay, and I'll, I'll do that. I'll, like I said, it just came to me, uh, before the meeting, so I'll forward it to, uh, Chris Petrini.
We, we need, we need a vote on that.
Okay.
I don't think you can vote on, uh, on this item unless it's a agenda item, isn't that correct? Can you vote on a select board report? I think as chair, Jeff, you can just simply allocate it to town council.
Yeah, I think that's probably the most.
If it was within twenty, forty-eight hours, he should have actually modified the agenda at the beginning or whatever.
Like I said, I got it at six thirty or something.
Yeah, I think it's fine for the chair to forward to town council without a vote.
You concur with that, Paul? You all right?
Well, the attorney general likes to see it, the board bring it up at a meeting, public meeting and.
Well, but I don't feel like we should wait two weeks to do that. Can I forward to town, town council and we could vote on it in two weeks?
I'll make my motion by moving that the agenda be open to consider an item not known by the chair forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting.
Okay, so you have a second? Does someone want to second that?
I'll second it, whatever.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So, um, we accept your amendment to, uh, the agenda, which would, uh, include addition of an open meeting law complaint due to town administrator search as an agenda item.
And I would move the motion I made before, which is to refer to town council, authorize him to respond to it.
Yep. Is there a second? Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. And, um, right before we go to executive session, I wanted to also say that I've been a big proponent of advisory attending many of our executive session items because there can be financial issues implicit or maybe in the future on some of them. So I instructed Dan Sichel that you know, from time to time, I think we should include them in some of the executive sessions and I'm recommending tonight that he ascend the first one, which is the one about the Hunting Lane project. So, so that, you know, we got, that was a town meeting vote on perhaps purchasing some land, there's some financial considerations, so I think it's good to keep advisory involved in not just the warrant and, and, you know, annual town meeting, but in financial issues of the town. So any, any comment on that from the board?
Sounds like you're an ex-advisory committee member.
I, I know, I know.
Yes, I am.
You are as well. That's George, so.
No, you've got three votes. You're gonna say yes to this.
I, I know, I stuck.
Well, we're advisory committee members.
All right, so, so with that said, um, do I have a motion to exit?
Can I add something on the reports real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Just that I was late to the meeting and I came at the end of Sean's presentation, so I don't know what was mentioned in the presentation, I couldn't comment then. But I also wanted to compliment on the geometric improvements at Woodland and Mill Street. Because I've never liked that always stop the way it's been in like a big parking lot type of field of asphalt. And, uh, I've been so far apart, but now it's an actual three-way stop that actually makes sense. So I just wanted to give that compliment on that one in particular.
Yeah, there was a lot of changes he brought to our attention, which you've probably seen too, that the right turn from South Main onto, um, West Goulding is changed also. You can't take it at forty miles an hour any longer because it's a, a more of a, uh, sharp right than a, than an angled right. Did you want to add anything, Sean?
If Eric's in town, I'd love to show him the plan for the left turn lane on North Main.
Yeah, you had it up on your screen. Do you want to pull it up again?
I, I can look it offline. You can open up an agenda item.
Catch up with me if you can, Eric.
It's pretty cool, though.
You're out.
All right, so, um, we've already read the, uh, executive session, so I declare that, uh, it is necessary to enter into executive session for two, items one and two that are shown on our agenda. So I would need a second and a roll call vote of my motion to enter executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. And do I have a motion to adjourn from open session?
So moved.
Marion?
Second.
Okay, and Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Jane. Diane, thank you very much.
Have a nice weekend. Bye.
Take care. Have a good night.
Ciao, guys. Stay in.